Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of International Falls. I would ask all to please arise in pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask the City Administrator to note the roll call with Counselor Drowba absent. He's on personal family vacation this week. Move to the agenda for this meeting and ask approval of the agenda. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kahler. Discussion on the motion or the minutes... or the agenda, excuse me. Are there none, all those questions on the agenda?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, agenda is approved. Thank you. Move to the minutes of the October 17 regular City Council Meeting.
I'll move to approve the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Question.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried and minutes are approved. Thank you. Go to the resolution on the transfers and payment of claims. We have a transfer to Fund Number 101, the general fund, from Fund Number 812 Lodging Tax Fund, $610.80. Accounts payable claims, City of International Falls, Airport commission claims of $606,541.16. Your pleasure with the transfers and the accounts payable claims.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Kahler to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Question on the motion or the resolution or the transfers or the claims?
I just have a question.
Please.
What is the balance in the airport fund at the current time? Do we know? I should have asked this earlier, I apologize. I just wanted to ensure that we are not too far in debt or too far in the hole.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Typically, we would provide the fund balance information at the second meeting of the month, so I don't have that available right now. It would have been the financial statement that we send out. And we don't have it for November. Actually, the bank statement just came in this morning.
I just can't recall what it was in October or September.
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head either. I can't answer that.
I guess I would like it if we... when we were putting the claims in there, since we're dealing with a $13 million project, that we show that balance along with the approval of the claims so we know where we're sitting a little more. I'm sure we're fine. I just want... We do have the responsibility to monitor that, and so it would be helpful if we had that bit of information.
I think we can very definitely say that there is not sufficient funds to cover the $600,000 in the airport fund balance and that the airport Executive Secretary has been working with the Minnesota Office of Aeronautics to make sure that we're going to get the repayment just as quickly as possible. So it could be that we might have 10 days to 14 days where we will have a deficit, but that would be covered just as quickly as we can.
I'm sure. But I would just like to know what that is because it's part of our responsibility to know that.
Are there questions or discussion with regard to the resolution, the motion, or the transfers or claims? Not question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, transfers are approved as well as claims. Thank you. We'll go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time on something that's not on the agenda? There's another opportunity at the end of the meeting, also for audience participation. Thank you. Go to public hearing and the... we have the first reading of the ordinance of the Fifth Series. This is an ordinance to amend the conditions of the approval of the alley vacation in Block E as established in Ordinance Number 370, approved April the 5th of 1954. The Public Works and Infrastructure Committee has met with the owner of the property, the Harrisons, and recommends that the Items 1 and 2 under Section 2 be deleted, which would allow for the sale of the property and would remove the right of the city to set poles, stretch wires, or lay pipes in that alley. So this opens up the... it gives a complete release of the property in the vacation of that alley so that the property owner who has that now can sell it in totality. Pleasure then the recommendation of the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee to adopt the first reading of the ordinance, amending the conditions of the alley.
Move.
Motion by Counselor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion or the ordinance. Hearing none. Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried and the first reading is approved. Thank you. That'll come up at the next meeting on November the 17th for the second reading. Thank you. Move to the consent agenda, and under the consent agenda we have 2017 license renewals for Cater... Cater For You LLC. It's an itinerant restaurant license. KNV Restaurant Incorporated doing business as Subway, a restaurant license. Kutaska Community Action Incorporated doing business as Frostbite Fines, two locations, for secondhand dealer license. Kleinfelter Synergy LLC doing business as McDonald's of International Falls, a restaurant license. MW Friends Incorporated doing business as Friends Garbage Service, a garbage hauler license. Mr. Faith Sound Light Incorporated, dance permit license and theater license. Pete-Dash Ham Food Service Incorporated doing business as Hardee's of International Falls, a restaurant license. Sandy's Place LLC, restaurant license. Sound North Pawn Broker License with established place of business. Up North Builders Incorporated, a snowplow license, and Yee-Sin Snow Plowing, a snowplow license. Is there any of these that council members want to have removed for discussion? Out a motion to approve the consent agenda will be accepted.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Kahler to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, consent agenda is approved, as are the licenses contained therein. Thank you. Move to new business, and the first item under new business is the "Twas Lights Before Christmas Parade" to be held at 6:00 PM on November the 25th. And that's a council information, but the President of the Chamber, Sean, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and counselors and city family. The parade is Friday, November 25th, which is the day after Thanksgiving, and we're using the same route as last year, and we thank you so much for the city's collaboration and of course, the police department's guidance, and we always have the fire department involved too, so we thank them as well. We are changing things up a little bit for the parade this year. We've added another category, a business category, and we've also increased our cash prizes. We're doing this in an effort to entice more floats and more participation from the residents, organizations, clubs, and businesses. I have some forms here I'd like to leave. Somebody came forward today, Mrs. Santa Claus, the wife of Santa Claus, came forward today and said that she knew that this topic was on the agenda this evening, and she said she and Mr. Claus would like to serve hot cocoa at Centennial Park, and they wanted to know if this could be approved by the council. It'd be immediately following the parade. The parade starts at 6:00, so it'll be right around 7:00, maybe until 8 o'clock. So right after the parade, folks have a place to disperse, and they want to be there to treat all of the paradegoers to some hot chocolate and cookies.
I don't know how we can say no to Mr. and Mrs. Claus.
I don't either.
So would the chamber also have that as one of their events?
Yeah, we would just add it on. It was an idea that was presented seriously by Mrs. Claus today.
So approval of the use of Centennial Park by the Chamber of Commerce for the serving of hot chocolate?
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Briggs.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried and use of the park is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a very special weekend, and if I may take another minute, I'm sure you've all heard of Small Business Saturday, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and it's an effort nationwide by... actually, it was American Express that launched it, but also in collaboration with the United States Chamber. It's the U.S. Chambers Program called Shop Small, Small Business Saturday. So I brought a mat for you guys. We have mats and posters and shopping bags for the business community. Just wanted to bring that up to you. We're really emphasizing that this year. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Sean.
I don't think you gave us the category, the new category.
It's business. There was just one general category, and it could be just any type of float, and the theme is lights and music and effort. But we wanted to add a business category. We think it'd be important for the business community to take time to enter floats as a way of promoting their business in a real kind of fun way. And we teamed up with The Journal and KHHS, KSDM, and we are offering cash prizes for that plus advertising credits at The Journal and the radio station. So first place gets a cash, nice big cash check, and some advertising credits at the media entities. Second place, the same thing, and then third place is an advertisement in our chamber newsletter, so...
Very good.
Yep, and then we upped the first prize, second place, third place for the other categories. So we thought that maybe neighborhoods or clubs and organizations might want to get together and do it as a fundraiser, build a float, perhaps win some cash.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two under new business is the Fourth Annual Toy Drive from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM on November the 25th, jointly sponsored by the Koochin County Sheriff's Office, the International Falls Fire Rescue EMS Department, and the International Falls Police Department. That flyer is also in the packet, so everyone be aware that the Fourth Annual Toy Drive is going to be taking place also on that Friday, November the 25th. Thank you to those entities that are participating in that effort. Item number three, Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation to restrict parking and allow loading and unloading zone only on the north side of Fifth Street between Ninth Avenue and Tenth Avenue in front of the Bacchus Community Center. And I do want to express to the council that I had a call from a citizen on Saturday evening, and they were concerned that this was on the agenda, that they were not going to be available to be at the meeting and express their concern about it. I know that Ward Merrill was not able to be here, but some of the board members are here, and I don't know if board members, if you want to come up and... be a part of the discussion with the council. So I would ask the council, this is a recommendation from the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee. The citizen that called asked if we would hold it off for two more weeks, but I would certainly also want to talk with the members of the board that are here. That person that called is not a member of the board, but I think they're active in the Arts Club that participates at Bacchus. So what is the council's pleasure with the committee recommendation?
Move.
Motion to approve the recommendation to restrict parking and allow a loading and unloading zone? So we have that motion by Counselor Briggs.
I'll second for discussion, possible amendment.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Thank you. So I guess the question might be posed to you folks on the Board of Directors at Bacchus about holding this up for two more weeks. I would have to tell you that the Public Works Committee has discussed this a number of times and are concerned about the narrowness of that street and that when there's parking on both sides of the street, only one vehicle can come through there. Also the concern for having emergency vehicles trying to get through there. And so the committee's recommendation is to remove the parking on the north side and then have that for loading and unloading only. The other alternatives that we looked at were the possibility of narrowing the sidewalk down on the north side or the Bacchus side. That gets a lot of... Bacchus gets a lot of activity, which we truly are pleased with. Certainly a community center to the fullest extent of the word. So your thoughts on holding this up and also the restriction on parking?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselor, for letting us be here tonight. Here with me is Sherri LaSarsa, who is the President of Bacchus Board, and Kay Arnold is a board member.
We haven't, of course, had a chance to discuss this as a board, but individually, we've talked about it a little bit, and I guess not seeing a problem with doing that. I too, because I go to Bacchus a lot, have to drive down there, and it is a little scary when you've got two cars going down the street with cars on each side parked, so...
Well, I would like to ask now, is Fifth Street narrower than Ninth Avenue? St. Thomas and us use Ninth Avenue all the time, and there is the dance studio. They're there every Thursday, but they don't really park on Fifth. They park more on Ninth Avenue. But I think Ninth Avenue is wider than Fifth, isn't it? And there's no residents there, whereas on Fifth Street, there's residents, you know, on the south side, and we're on the north, so...
I believe Ninth Avenue is 44 feet, but don't hold me to these figures, and that the Fifth Street is 36 feet is what I believe was the figures that we had. And you concur with that, City Administrator?
I do with the width on Fifth Street. I'm not sure about the width on Ninth Avenue, but Fifth Street is 36 feet wide, curb to curb.
May I ask that, what is the plan for that? Are you going to just paint the yellow curve and put in non-parking? Or you plan to... or the council plan to widen the Fifth Street? In the future, would you put the bench in front of Bacchus? Because in some moments, there are lots of citizens coming to Bacchus and sitting outside waiting for the bus to come. Would that be in the plan?
May I respond to that, Mr. Mayor? I think that I heard a suggestion from, I believe, a board member, and it's unfortunate that you haven't had a chance to discuss this, but I'd like to relay the suggestion to the rest of the council because I think it's a good one. And I don't... I just heard it this week, otherwise I would have relayed it to the Public Infrastructure Committee. But would it be possible to provide better service for people dropping off, let's say elderly parents to go into an event or pick up children there, which happens frequently, and make it safer by cutting out sort of a semicircle in the front of one of the doors so that you could pull in at least half the width of a car? And still, you know, to drop somebody off, let's say five-minute parking there, that would maybe accommodate length of two cars back to back and then the width of half a car, so that there'd still be a sidewalk there. That's a suggestion I heard, and I've seen that used, but, you know...
I think...
It may be a helpful thing for the...
I think the committee in discussion determined if we were to take the parking off, then that would... they would make that a loading and unloading zone, the entire block, so anyone could pull up there and drop someone off or pick someone up. You know, sitting there for a few minutes is not going to be an issue. I think, and same with buses, if buses were to pull up there, they could drop folks off. That would not be a problem at all. I think to make an indentation into the sidewalk is going to take... You're going to have to have some room for the vehicle to start turning and then to pull in and then pull out. You're probably going to take two or three parking spaces in order to do that. And so I think the total right now is probably about six or seven vehicles that park there right now. So the loss of possibly six to seven vehicles is what we're looking at, where we might, if you did what you're speaking of, you might have... You might lose four or five parking spaces. So I'm not sure that we're going to lose a great deal more by just taking the parking off.
You're probably going to have... people are going to have to wait to drive in anyhow. So it's still going to be the same people, and as long as people are able to be dropped off and let in there on the loading zone, I think you'd be getting the same purpose done. Now, has there ever been any thought to extend it to another block, Eighth Avenue? Because that gets kind of the same sometimes on the Aquinas there. I mean, you have the same issues when there is activities going there, if we're talking about the driving through and stuff like that.
There was discussion of going from Eighth Avenue over to Tenth Avenue, but the number of events at the Aquinas Hall seems less, and so it hasn't been an issue that's been raised by citizens. Where the one at Bacchus with so much traffic there and people trying to cross the street, coming between cars, folks don't go down to the corner and cross like they should, and so for overall safety and emergency vehicles being able to get through, the committee is recommending that we take the parking off the north side and sign it loading and unloading only. Further thoughts from the board? I know, again, I agree with Counselor Jacksaw. If you want more time to have the board discuss this, we're certainly open to that. Otherwise, we're certainly willing to move forward this evening and...
The board will have a meeting this Thursday, and then we'll bring it up at the board meeting.
So would you like us to table it till the next meeting of the City Council for action, for final action?
If that would be possible, I guess I would like to bring it up to the board, the entire board.
Yeah.
I think that's very fair.
Yeah.
So a motion, did you want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to table this question.
To table till the meeting of November the 21st.
Well, it is nice we have a parking problem.
Yes.
That is true.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Jacksaw, second by Counselor Briggs, to table the recommendation to restrict parking and allow loading and unloading to the meeting of November the 21st. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Yes, and so we will have that on the agenda for November the 21st and wait to hear from your board.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Item number four under new business is to request approval of 2017 license renewals. Those are... And I guess, City Administrator, I believe, given these are liquor licenses, they need an individual motion for each? Or do you think... do you see them, and maybe a question more towards the city attorney than the city administrator, but between you, is there a need to have an individual license for each, or an individual motion for each license?
I think that's the way we've done it in the past, whether or not that's absolutely required. I don't really have an opinion on that. I think, again, kind of like we do with a consent agenda. You know, if there was a particular license where people had an issue with, that could be voted on separately or discussed separately, but I don't... As long as each one is read off, these are the ones we're dealing... I think you could do it with one motion.
Very fine. Is there any concern on the part of the City Administrator or the council?
No, Mr. Mayor, I would concur with the city attorney's opinion. I do know that the ordinance requires that anything that has tobacco sales or liquor sales be handled separately and not under the consent agenda, but I don't know that it couldn't be acted on as proposed here as part of one motion. Clearly, if any of the council had concern with one of these particular establishments, we could have a discussion about that, but I think the one motion would be sufficient.
Very good. And then one last item, that would be to the Chief of Police, the Police Department, you get a copy of these so that you've had an opportunity to input on any license holder with regard to liquor or cigarette? Okay. Council's pleasure then with the license approvals for January 2017, effective January 1st, 2017. That would be the Elks Club Number 1599, a club license, Sunday liquor license, and restaurant license. The Border Oil Company doing business as the Jug Liquors, an off-sale liquor and cigarette license. Dollar Tree Stores Incorporated doing business as Dollar Tree 3694, a fireworks license. Family Dollar Store Number 10058, a cigarette license. Holiday Companies doing business as Holiday Station Store Number 380, a 3-2 off-sale, a cigarette, gasoline pump, and restaurant license. Quarters Incorporated doing business as Quarters Amico and Car Wash, a gasoline pump and cigarette license. Super One Liquor LLC doing business as County Market Liquor, off-sale liquor and cigarette license. And Miners Incorporated doing business as County Market, 3-2 off-sale, cigarette, gasoline pump, and restaurant license. Your pleasure with those license renewals.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Kahler to approve those licenses.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Question on the motion or any of those individual license approvals? Question?
Aye.
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 Yes, motion is carried and licenses are approved. Thank you. Item number five under new business is a resolution approving application for an off-site gambling permit for the International Falls Recreation Hockey Association to conduct a raffle on January 19th, 2017. That would be at Bronco Arena. Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Question on the motion or the resolution? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and the permit for the off-site gambling is approved. Thank you. Item number six under new business is a resolution and application and permit for a one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for the Koochin Aging Options on December 2, 2016, at the Bacchus Community Center.
I'll make a motion to approve that, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to adopt that resolution and approve that permit.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion?
Big time. Try to come. Thinking as a board member.
Question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted. Item number seven under new business is to approve a resolution for application and permit for a one-to-four-day temporary on-sale... permit for a one-to-four day temporary on-sale liquor license for the VFW Club of Little Fork on November 21, 2016, for Border Peace Officers' Annual Event at the Union Hall.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Kayler to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion or the resolution? Question?
Aye.
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 I vote yes. Motion is carried, resolution is adopted. Permit is approved. Thank you. Item number eight is a resolution approving the delinquent water and sewer accounts to be certified to the County Auditor Treasurer. And that resolution, and there is, County, City Administrator, you have a question with regard to one of the certifications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Staff's recommendation would be to delete the certification that's attributable to the address at 1103 Ninth Street. It's roughly eight, about eight down from the top, and we're recommending that one be removed from the list for action by the City Council.
Okay, so, we would remove from the water certification listings that parcel ID 92-007-94120? All right. But is it council's pleasure with the remainder of those delinquent water and sewer accounts?
Move.
Motion by Councilor Briggs.
I'll second that.
And by Councilor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion, or the resolution, or the delinquent water and sewer accounts?
So, does this end up getting paid via collection by the county auditor?
These would be attached to the...
Real estate.
Real estate tax.
So, you do get these?
For taxes payable in 2017.
Provided the property doesn't go for...
Tax forfeit.
I would just add, Mr. Mayor, that the reason for deleting the one is that we're, we've been receiving some monies on a payment plan, and we want to afford ourselves more time to do that. So, that's why that one's being removed.
How many, how long does an account go before you turn it over, before you go to this step?
Well, 90 days before we get into a water shut-off, but we only do this once a year for the taxes payable the following year. So, we do afford an opportunity to the property owners to enter into a payment plan if there's issues with it, and...
How many, how much of this is, forget it. I don't want to discuss this at any depth. I do want to come back, though, and revisit this at some point, because of the concern about water leaks and how we may manage that differently to reduce some of this.
See, Mr. Mayor, you're counsel, that there is an interest component included in this, and you can see the difference between the principal amount and the interest amount. And some of these, depending on the timing, goes on as, for a number of months, goes on as 14 months. I think the longest looks like it's 15 months, but it depends on when it's gone past the 90 days due, and there hasn't been any agreement to make payment. And because of where it was last year, we can't certify it until we get to this year, because it's done once a year, and it has to be to the county auditor this month.
Quite a few of these look like they're landlords. I recognize them as landlords.
There's some, absolutely.
Further discussion with regard to the motion or the resolution, or the list of certification? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote yes. Motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and the delinquent water and sewer accounts are certified to the county auditor. Thank you. Item number nine is a resolution approving delinquent grass and blight invoices to be certified to the county auditor.
Move.
Motion by Councilor Briggs to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Second by Councilor Kayler. Question on the motion or the resolution, or the delinquent grass and blight invoices?
Quite a little sum, $9,500.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote yes. Motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and the list of delinquent grass and blight invoices are certified to the county. Thank you. Item number 10 under New Business is to request consideration to change the City of International Falls Code of Ordinances, Section 2.52. Residency requirements for certain city employees were job-related necessity to allow for an eight-minute response area versus the current six-minute response area. That's Fire Chief Manasa.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I believe you guys all have a copy of the proposal in your packet. Basically, what we are looking to do is change that residency response for fire and EMS from six minutes to eight minutes. The background on this was, at one point in time, it was the city boundaries of International Falls. In the previous years here, and I'm not exactly sure what year, it's not on the statute, but both the League of Minnesota Cities and the Minnesota statute changed residency requirements, could not be established on a political subdivision boundary, or could not use a physical boundary, and they recommended going to a timed response. When this was looked at, I believe it was former Chief Jensen that did some timing and figured the city boundary was roughly six minutes to the fire station. We're looking to expand that to eight minutes. The reason we're looking at that at this point in time, we are wanting to run a fire test for new recruits for the fire department. The timing is pertinent to both update our bylaws to make them more applicable, and then, for the purposes of this test, cast a wider net, so to speak, on getting trained fire personnel or EMS personnel for the department. We've made some changes the last few years in the fire department, as far as, most notably on the ambulance side. We do staff the station 24/7. There are still instances where we call from home, but they're getting fewer between than when they used to be. At one time, every ambulance run was called from a person from at home to respond to the fire station, to grab an ambulance, and then to go to the scene. Now, we're getting less of those. I don't see the six-to-eight minute change being too much of a problem. On the fire side, most of our firemen, I should say, all of our firemen have their gear at home or in their vehicles. For a large percentage of our fire call-outs, they do respond directly to scene. There are a few times that they do respond to the fire station, but it's pretty much isolated to a car accident where we take one truck out, or a response to Boise that we'd respond to the fire hall. Other than that, they do respond to the scene. That being said, if you look at our current Section 252, it does find response area in work headquarters. For us, the work headquarters is the fire station. And again, as I previously mentioned, you know, at one point in time, that was a valid, good system in place to respond to the fire station, to respond to the fires. Now, we don't do that as much, and again, I don't see it as a major impact to service. I don't believe citizens would suffer in making this change, and I think it would benefit both departments to be able to, like I said, cast a wider net and get a wider application of people that we can put on for our services.
Having heard that presentation by Chief Manasa, what's the council's pleasure with regard to the change in the ordinance, amending the ordinance? I assume the City Administrator will take two readings.
That's correct.
Council's pleasure.
Move.
Motion by Councilor Briggs to amend the ordinance, Section 2.52, to allow for an eight-minute response area versus the current six.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kayler. Discussion by the council, or questions of Chief Manasa?
I have a question.
Please.
I am Chair of the Human Resources Committee. Just questioning why that didn't come through the committee first.
I don't have a good answer for you on that. I talked to the City Administrator and the mayor on how to handle this. I was not aware on how to make a change to the charter, so I was recommended to go this route.
Mr. Mayor, please.
I would just add, in response to Councilor Jack's concern, because I don't necessarily see this as a human resource issue, as more of a, as an operational issue in terms of response times for both police and ambulance services, and for the reasons that the chief had mentioned, I view it as a council issue, just because it's more operational in terms of the actual response time. So, that's why we just brought it directly for the council for discussion, and assuming this motion goes forward, I would envision that the first reading wouldn't be until the meeting on November 21st, and the second reading would have to be at a meeting at least seven days beyond that, which would be at the council's meeting on December 5th for second reading, and it wouldn't be effective until after it's published. So, there's opportunity, if the council feels it appropriate, to refer it to the Human Resources Committee. We can still do that between now and meeting on the 21st.
Just as Human Resource Chair, I'm a jealous chair. I'd like to make sure that the issues that we should be reviewing are reviewed. And I guess, I feel that some of the questions, when they involve human resource, have a necessity become operational, and sometimes that takes more thought than this particular change might, but that's why we have a Human Resource Committee, is to look at what impacts changes will have on operational efficiencies and so forth.
And this does, Councilor Jacksaw, does kind of fall between about three different organizational structures. We're currently looking at our civil service bylaws and what the legalities are on that. We're seeing our civil service bylaws are quite outdated, and we're going to make some changes to those two, I believe. That is for the Civil Service Board to make those recommendations, along with Administrator Anderson had some of the legal work done on that. What we didn't know on this, it took a little digging, we found this is not a civil service issue, although I did talk to the Civil Service Board on this before this recommendation was made, being that it was in our Code of Ordinances that it had to go this route, so...
The other problem I have with this is that, and I, I think it sounds very reasonable, but now we're at eight minutes. 10 years from now, we'll come back and say, well, it should be 10. You know what I mean? As you go through two-minute increments, it comes further and further out, so...
I can attest to you personally that I would not recommend anything more than eight minutes. That is my personal opinion, the max we can do. Part of the reason we did this, too, and I should have said this in the explanation here, but the six minutes that was determined before as city boundaries, there are people in the city right now that cannot make the fire hall in six minutes. So, in a backwards kind of way, we're actually violating the charter as-is, I believe. On the flip side of that, depending on which way you head out of town, west and south doesn't get you too far beyond city limits, but east, we can get almost to, well, we can get to the road just past Rainy Lake One Stop on the highway in six minutes. There's only one stoplight and two stop signs coming into that end of town. So, really, the way our town is laid out and the way our roads run, there's really some variance here on what you classify as a boundary and a response.
Do most cities use this kind of parameter?
They do. I did talk to a few other cities. All of them are on a timed basis. There's a few variations on how they do it. Some get fairly complicated. They allow, I believe it's 10% of their senior staff can live outside of a residency requirement. So, for example, if we had a six- or eight-minute response, 90% of the people would have to live within that response. 10% of your senior members, if applied to, could live up to 10 minutes out. I don't want to complicate that. I don't think that's a good way to do it. Grand Rapids, for example, I don't remember what their response time is, and it's a little longer than ours, but they take an average of three different timings. So, the chief of the department times at morning, midday, and at night, and then all departments do it a little different, whether they stop the stopwatch at a stop sign or a stoplight, or, so there's a lot of variation on how different departments time their residency requirements. So, some of them, you see a longer response time, maybe eight or 10 minutes, but that's a straight-running clock with no stop. Some of them, you see a four-minute response time. Those are stopping the watch at every red light, every time the vehicle stops in process, they will stop the timing. So, again, a lot of variation in what you see, so...
And the size of the city has to have a huge impact on this.
Well, and just like ours, there's a lot of cities that have, their layouts are different, their flows through town, their stoplights, everything is different. You have cities with railroad tracks that impede traffic, so there's a lot of different ways to do it.
And where your stations are located also is a factor?
Yes, and there are certain cities that have, we do run, we don't operate out of, but we do have South Falls Fire Hall. Some cities would count that as a response area as well. You could go get to either station within the timed response. We're not doing that. We're going to the main station, which we've always done.
Okay, thank you.
And I think your point was well-made, that with the volunteer firefighters, they have radios, and they would, for the most part, always report to the scene, to the fire, and that probably speeds up their response time in most cases. The fire engineer that's on duty will bring the fire rig to the scene, and the fireman will report there. And as volunteers, they must still abide by all the traffic rules and regulations in getting to a fire scene.
That is a fact. They are bound by traffic rules.
They can have their flashing lights on, emergency lights, they still must follow.
That is a request for yield, but it is not a, they are bound by traffic laws.
Further questions or discussion of the chief, or the, with regard to the proposed change in the ordinance? City Administrator, your interpretation is that the council would approve putting this on the amended ordinance for the November 21st meeting?
That's correct. Yeah, we'll put it in ordinance form. It would be an amendment to Section 2-52 of the Code of Ordinances, and then the first reading would be on the agenda for the 21st of November, and the second reading on the December 5th agenda.
Good. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried. Be on the agenda for ordinance amendment then on November 21st.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item number 11 under New Business is to approve the Frontier Mitel My Voice Office Maintenance Two-Year Agreement for the existing Mitel phone system. That comes with it a annual fee of $2,469.24.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Kayler to approve that maintenance agreement.
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Question on the motion or the maintenance agreement?
Is this the answering machine?
Phone systems, the whole, all the phone systems.
The whole phone system?
Yes, that's correct. And, Mr. Mayor, I would clarify, I believe that the $2,469 figure is for the two-year time period.
Oh, you're right.
One year is for $1,234. So, that'd be for the full two-year term, not each year.
Stand corrected. Thank you.
So, this is just to come in and fix things if they go down? So, what is this for?
It's for maintenance on the phone system. So, it's a one, it's a two-year maintenance option on our phone system, so if you have any problems with that, we provide, provides full maintenance coverage for the time period. If there's software assurance updates or anything, it's covered 100%, top to bottom, quote-unquote, by Mitel for that fee.
Not a lot of money, so I don't want to belabor it too much, but are we, did we price other vendors for this?
I don't believe so, because we, this was provided by this particular company. They were the original supplier, and we had one before, and so, this is renewing the maintenance agreement that we had. agreement that we had. System that came in just before my- it hadn't been in place long before I had gotten here, so I wasn't involved with the original approval. I can't speak to that.
Okay. Is this comparable to the prior amount, you know?
I actually don't know what the prior amount was. I didn't ask the question.
And then, the other question I have is, I know I'm being a pain today. The other question I have is, the existing- the maintenance pricing assumes the existing system has a valid support- software support contract. Is that part of this fee or is that in addition to?
I think as you read the email on the back sheet, the one you have in your right hand.
Okay.
No, go further. I think you go to the- there you go, that one. I think the last sentence in that says that this will coincide with the two remaining years on the software assurance updates and will guarantee that the system will be 100% covered from top to bottom for the next 24 months. Further questions or discussions with regard to the approval of that two-year maintenance agreement? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll go, yes, motion is carried. Maintenance agreement is approved. Thank you. Item number 12 under new business is to approve the renewal of the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Property and Casualty Insurance for 2017, which includes the not waive monetary limits on tort liability and make no change to the performance bond renewal application.
I will make a motion that we approve that renewal with the- to confirm that we keep our monetary limits in place for tort liability and make no change to the performance bond, et cetera.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson moves to approve that casualty- property and casualty insurance with those provisions.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Well, yes, motion is carried, and the property and casualty insurance is approved. Further business under new business, we'll move to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator?
A report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney?
I have nothing special to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Our October report, officers had participated with the fire departments in regards to the Fire and Safety Week at Kmart as they usually do, and that went well. Officer Koschik conducted a gun safety class at St. Thomas and followed by a tour of the law court and center courthouse with the young children. Of course, training went for this month. We did our nighttime firearms qualification. Officer Mast completed the advanced narcotics investigations course through the BCA. Also, I'll participate in mock emergency at the International. Also of note, we executed two drug search warrants within the city limits this month. As far as our calls for service went, we had 343 general calls for service, 75 traffic stops, 27 medical assists, 14 arrests, 69 ICRs. I've also included in here my promotion recommendation for Officer Koschik. On October 25th, the Police Civil Service Commission with Sergeant Terry Christian, from that interview, a list of three names. Koschik was the one that I recommended for promotion to sergeant.
Not a motion now?
I don't think it requires a motion. The chief has the power to point. There's no-
Okay.
Yep, just for council information.
That's all I have here.
A good report. Thank you, Chief Maston. Questions for the chief? And what is the effective date of the promotion of-
November.
Sergeant?
Tomorrow, yes, sir.
Tomorrow? Very good. Thank you. And I would like to commend Chief Maston on his presentation at the Chamber of Commerce Lunch and Learn. It was very well-done. Thank you for your work there, and I think that certainly helps the community to better understand where we're headed. Further questions or for Chief Maston on his report? Thank you. We'll go to Chief Manassa on the fire rescue monthly report.
For the month of October, the fire department, I noticed I may have laid this out a little confusing on the top. Here, I have four department call-outs and nine city responses. For clarification on that, we did have four full department call-outs. The other five responses were either by myself or an officer responding to smoke scare, CO call, whatnot. Those are listed below. We did have one haz- in jurisdiction hazmat call. That was assisting with Chief Maston and the BCA. One chimney fire, one vehicle fire, one gas leak, three commercial smoke alarms, one smoke scare, and one CO call. We did not have any rural fires this month, past month. Our monthly fire meeting was on the 20th of October. Again, as Chief Maston mentioned, we did do the mock drill with EFG Center at the bridge, and then, following that day, we did our hose testing for the year. That was our monthly training. Hazmat training was on the 13th. We had a representative from HSEM up here. He did a crude-by-rail course along with inventoried supplies and got a checklist done for us. And then, of course, earlier in the month, we had Fire Prevention Week, which I view as a success. It went very well. We had a lot of children in and out of the fire station, and we did visit the schools and some of the- we had the daycare providers come to the fire station. We visited Head Start and ECFE. Went very well. At the end of October, I don't have it listed down here myself, Assistant Chief Pavlik and Engineer Mortensen attended the Fire Chiefs Conference in St. Cloud for four days. Very good event, as always. Good training and good informational stuff that goes on down there. The ambulance in the month of October, we had 75 911s, 51 transfers for a total of 126 runs for the year. That brings us up to a total of 1,330 runs, which we're on pace with last year. I didn't run that total for last year to date, but we had 1,528 runs, I believe, last year total, so we're on pace to do that and maybe a little more. Our monthly meeting and training was held on the 12th with a regular business meeting, and then we did bloodborne pathogens and PPE, personal protective equipment.
Good report. Questions for Chief Manassa? We're due for a new ambulance. Is that this month or next month?
I believe it's about two weeks out. I have not been able to contact the rep. I've heard through Administrator Anderson it's two weeks out. I know the rep I deal with, his father passed away early last week, so when trying to get ahold of him, I heard that, so I've kind of left him alone here so he can get things sorted out. We did receive our new stretchers two weeks ago, and we're waiting to get our power loads now. Those will be installed in-house, so the company that provides our ambulance, that we purchase the ambulance from, will come out and install those in-house, so we don't have to run to Fergus Falls three different times with three different rigs. So, for a nominal fee, I think we're going to save some money there, get them all done in one shot. By the end of the year, we should be up and running with the new ambulance, the four new stretchers and the power loads. And we'll have a training and in-service on that for ourselves, and then, of course, we'll invite the officers over so they're familiar with them as well.
Other questions for Chief Manassa? Thank you, Chief. Great work down there. Report to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions?
Well, I had the pleasure of spending four hours with the rest of you at our training session.
Very well-done.
Yeah. Learned- it was very useful, I felt.
Good refresher for me.
What?
Good refresher for me.
Yeah, well, I didn't know one thing about it until that session, and there was a lot to learn. I was impressed. The speaker was not boring. I was expecting to be bored, so it was entertaining as well as informative.
Very worthwhile. Further under council committees or reports, I would just note two items under my mayor's report. One, having met with Ms. Carrie Howe, who's the newly appointed deed representative. We had a change in the region, and they've transferred Cootines County International Falls over to the Bemidji region, and so she will be our deed representative. And then, this morning, I met with the New Voyager National Park Superintendent Bob DeGross, and he will be actively in his position in December. Anything further to come under council committee reports? We'll go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time? Not noted correspondence. The canvassing board reading will be next Monday, November the 14th, at 1:00 p.m., and the next regular city council meeting is Monday, November the 21st, at 4:30 p.m. Nothing further to come before the council. We'll stand adjourned.